Item 11.0 is the superintendent's update and we'll go to Dr. Greg Little at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if you were paying attention, but today was actually the first day of school. I know it comes to you as a shock and as a surprise, but we are very excited about today. This is like our Christmas and New Years and all those really great holidays wrapped up into one. What an exciting day. It was an exciting start. We just had a going from school to school today. There was certainly an energy and excitement about the start of school and we are thrilled that the 18-19 school year has kicked off. I know today, I certainly went to Pleasant Hill Elementary and Lexington High School where my third grader and 10th grader had their first days of school. I was also able to go to Gilbert Primary today and see Mr. Will Moody on his first day of school, our new principal at Gilbert Primary School. I also took a little detour to Mount Horv. They had a day one prayer group of moms that got together that were praying for our students, praying for our schools and praying for our communities. It was non-denominational, just a group of moms coming together. And I'll tell you, that's a powerful, powerful thing when moms come together like that. And so I was able to just put my head in there. And then also went to New Providence, Lexington Middle and Midway. We kind of knocked those out. They were all in a line. I'm really proud to tell you that our central services went to every campus today. We were represented on every campus today. So it was really exciting to reach out to our schools as they start this, the hustle and bustle of the school year. And now what we really want is to make sure day two is just as exciting, you know, and day 45 and day 78 and day 92 and those kinds of things. We want to make sure that there's an excitement about coming to school each and every day. We just want a little few more people to ride school buses instead of everybody trying to drive at the same time. That's always one of the favorite things early on. It has been a really smooth start. Certainly we've had our blips like we normally would, you know, transportation is, you know, school buses getting that whole process, you know, people getting used to that. That'll continue to round itself out. I do want to take a moment here to recognize specifically our law enforcement community. They are essential for us starting school. There was a law enforcement presence on every campus that I went to today. And I know after speaking to our senior leadership team and other members of central services, they were very visible out at other schools as well. And in addition to that, we, I know when you drop off at Pleasant Hill Elementary School, having that police officer there directing, the sheriff's deputy, I guess, I know that's kind of a thing sometimes between the two, and the sheriff shares the sheriff's deputy, that was directing traffic there was absolutely vital, was able to keep traffic moving. So we have a tremendous partnership with our law enforcement community. And I have to tell you that this afternoon, the sheriff called just as dismissal time and we reflected upon the day. And having that kind of relationship and that kind of partnership really is impactful for our schools. And we're very thankful for that, for our law enforcement community. So the first day of school has started and just extremely excited, ready for tomorrow. I bet right now, both my kids are fast asleep because I'm sure they are exhausted after their first day of school. But it's so exciting to get started again. I would also want to talk to you a little bit about, if you'll recall, we've talked a couple times about the Palmetto College and a potential partnership with the Palmetto College. I want to let you know that that is moving forward. Our MOU has been signed and that the Palmetto College is planning on moving into an annex, an annex portion of Lexington, the Lexington Middle School Campus. So just to be clear, originally we were talking, if you're looking at the building, so if the clock is the building, we were originally talking about building space on the right-hand side of the campus. After further review, we decided on building space on the left-hand side of the campus because that place is more isolated and has separate facilities with separate restrooms. And so there is no crossover among the students who may be attending that school and our own students. So it's a completely separate piece. But we are excited about this potential partnership. They're gonna, they're really doing a soft launch in Fall 1 and a harder launch in Fall 2 and certainly up and running by January. They're going to try to offer four or five classes here to begin with. We're going to treat this more as a pilot program as opposed to full-blown implementation. Really, you know, I think the approach is more of a measure twice, cut once thing, taking our time, seeing how it works. There's probably still a ton of questions. I know Mr. Salters and staff have been working with that group. But really the idea is, just to be honest with here with the board, I really think this is a game changer for our community. It's amazing to me, when I first moved here, and again, only been in here for a couple of years, that there was, that there was no higher education presence in the heart of Lexington, in this fast-growing community with people from all over the country moving in. I just, I was shocked that we didn't have a technical college or a, you know, a small college or any liberal arts college or anything like that here. And so having the Palmetto College having a presence on our campus, and again, it's not just for our kids. I want to be clear about this particular piece to it. We have partnerships with the Palmetto College where our children go and take college classes. That's not this. This is if say Jeff's son came home for the summer and wanted to go, he's a graduate, Jeff's son's a graduate, and wanted to take another class. He could go take a class at this college. Or if you had a relative or a friend that started college but didn't finish, they could go take these classes instead of going downtown to the main USC campus. And if I'm not mistaken, the Palmetto College also offers about 14 majors and there'll be a blended, they do a lot of, most of their work is online, but for this, it would be more of a blended approach. And we are working with them to see if we can take advantage of other things for our children. But this really is for adults and for, and for having a higher education presence on campus. We started this conversation, that actually may be the first time I met the mayor. He, I shook his hand and we went out to eat and he gave me this pitch about this whole idea of doing this. And so to see that work, really two years in the making come to fruition with this small pilot program, and it's a small thing, I just, you know, to be honest, it is a small thing. But at the same time, I think these are very important steps and a very important piece of the puzzle that I think really can serve Lexington for now and into the future. So this is a project that I'm really keeping my fingers crossed. I want to see it nurtured. It's still so, it's still so small right now, but it's really something that if it takes roots and can really grow and there's a need for it in the community, I really think this can thrive. So just absolutely, again, I think it's a real game changer for our students, it's a real game changer for our community, that there's a higher education presence now in Lexington 1. So if you're driving past there and you see some signage go up, they're putting some things in. Again, we're taking really small, just to be clear again, we're taking very small, slow steps to get this thing started. But the idea is those small, slow steps then can really root the idea and the program and then it can really begin to grow and flourish. So one other element, just in terms of safety, I know student safety's been a big talk from our end about having other people on campus. Right now, the courses are offered in the evening so that the, there's not even a crossover between our students and their students. They're on two different schedules. So again, small steps, student safety certainly always, you know, a major concern for us. And I can certainly assure the board that we will never do anything in this partnership that would ever endanger our own students. So those are part of the conversations and we're certainly working in that direction.
Do you see that as a fit for our employees, as a step for them for continuing education?
Absolutely. So if you think about what this partnership could be, right, and you're talking about like, you're really talking about what's possible and what we could dream. One of the things we've talked about is the idea is, how cool would it be that our teachers could come take graduate courses in our district and not have to drive everywhere? They could do it as cohorts, you know, sometimes it's easier to do it as a group as opposed to trying to do it, you know, on your own. These are all dreams that we have that one day it could happen. Again, right now, it's just four or five classes. It's a little bitty seed. Suzie was talking about seeds earlier. This is just a little bitty seed. But I really believe it could grow into those elements that we could see as big dreams. And really too, just to share another big dream is to think about our adult education classes. Those adults who are coming back and are graduating with their high school degree or their GED, maybe then could just go straight, could go straight across and they're then in college.
That would be amazing.
And they can continue their education right then and right there. So there's some really cool, neat, big ideas that can come from this. But again, we're starting small and we're going to take slow and steady is what we're doing right now with the project. Finally, I just wanted to remind the board, also when thinking of something that has, what I think is pretty exciting is, don't forget that our rolling study hall ribbon cutting is September the 10th. That's coming up. I want to make sure that's, that'll be down in Pillion, at Pillion Middle School. People may or may not be right, you may get a bus ride out of this thing or not. We're not really sure yet. I know there's some, there's some excitement about that, but you're going to see the rolling study halls in action. And just for background of the group that's here, we have bus routes in our school district that are quite lengthy. And so Google has provided us with access points, with equipment and money for tutors so that those kids, when they're riding on the bus for an hour, hour and a half, they can have access and so they can do their homework.
Chromebooks.
And Chromebooks, yes, and equipment, yes, and the Chromebooks. If you think about the idea of having an hour and a half commute to work every day, both morning and evening is about three hours a day. So three hours a day times five is 15, that's 15 hours. You're really talking about two extra school days if you're running, riding three hours on the bus each day. So it's a pretty long week for those kids. And so being able to be connected, do their homework, having a tutor right there on the bus, we really then can assist those students. By the time they get home, maybe they're done with all that stuff. And then they don't have to worry about it when they get home. So.
I'm anxious to see what kind of effect that has positively on behavior.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Me too.
Have we started training our bus drivers that are going to be heading these, these particular rolling buses?
So we did a soft launch last year. So we've got some, we've already had some, so a little bit. And technically, they're, I think they're starting now. So they'll have some, well, maybe not today, but they're starting here soon too. And so they've had, the tutors really, they're ones that have had the most training. But of course, the bus drivers love it because always having a second adult, you know, the hardest thing about driving the bus is you're looking forward and everybody that you're trying to pay attention to is behind you. And that's a challenging time. So they'll have extra hands on the bus and those kids are working on it.
I can't help but think what a blessing this is for those parents because the kids probably, I mean, they have to stay up late to do their homework. But if they come home with the homework mostly done.
That's right.
Then those, you know, the kids can play, which we want our children to do as much as possible. And, you know, bedtimes have got to be earlier. So I think what Mike said about behavior, I think we're going to see some peripheral improvements on things that we're not expecting.
Absolutely. And you think about it too, if I get behind in class or I don't understand something in class, now I've really got to wait till the next day to engage with the teacher again. Now if I don't understand something, boy, at the end of the day, I'm getting feedback from a tutor and getting help from that tutor immediately. I'm not having to wait till the next day where, to be honest, a middle school student remembering a question from the day before to answer, to ask tomorrow, I don't know, I know you have a middle school student in your home and I recently had a middle school student in my home, and they just don't, they don't think that way. So they need that hands-on approach. And so that rolling study hall piece, we really think has a lot of potential. And we're excited about studying that because that may be something that we expand in the future. So.
I think we were probably going to be asked to expand it because I think the word's going to get out and the, yeah, I think it's going to be a home run.
It's exciting that Google chose us to be a pilot school.
Well, if I can talk about that for just a second. So you saw earlier, we had a teacher that was recognized as part of a Google certified trainer as part of the Dynamic Learning Project. The work that Pillion Middle School, Gilbert Middle School, Carolina Springs Middle School and White and Old Middle School put in to that project opened all these other doors. Their professionalism, the reason Google chose us is because they knew we would do it right. And that speaks a lot to our school district. We didn't have to fill out all these forms. We didn't have to, understand, they called us and said, we want to do this. It's probably going to cost about $250,000 and we're willing to pay for it.
That's amazing. And we will look forward to that on the 10th of September.
That's right. So we'll do that 10th of September.
Excellent.
So lots of great things there to talk about. I know that Mr. Salters has a.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry to step on your toes. I know the board allocated some funds for a pool of teachers that we really waited to place until basically this week or the last couple of weeks. Can you give us an update on where those needs may have landed and how we responded to the issues where the student population's a little greater than we projected?
Absolutely. That's a great, that's a great question, Ms. Smith. And I should have anticipated that. Yes, thank you. So there, you, let me go back just a couple of months and to look at the pool of positions that you started to do. When I first got here in 16, this idea actually took effect. The board came up with this idea that because of growth, you never really know where the kids are coming. You know, they don't show up in these tight little boxes. You know, you'll have, you'll have one year, every kid that moves into a school is in kindergarten. But then the next year, every kid that comes to school is like in third grade or something. I mean, it's really bizarre how these patterns work. And so the board identified at that time, 10 pool positions to really go out and help fill that need. So if there's, say, more third grade at Red Bank Elementary, you can fill that need there. Or if there's more, if you've got a bunch of fifth graders at Carolina Springs Elementary School, you can fill that need there. So this year, we identified pool positions for a couple of reasons. So we always keep pool positions around to help our special ed classes because that's typically one of the things that changes and grows the most from year to year. We also identified positions for interventionists. So we were able to place eight additional interventionists this year and we ranked that by need. And we captured our biggest eight where we saw kids that were needing to be served and needed extra help but were not being served at those schools. And we were able to do that. The other element that we tried to do is, if you'll recall, last year, we reduced class sizes in first and second grade and got those down to about 21 or 22 to one. That was the idea. With this year, what we, what we looked at is we took three of those pool positions and placed them in kindergarten classes. And as of yesterday, we were at 22 to one average across the district. So our formula for that is really 26 to one. But again, you know, 26 kindergartners on paper look one way. 26 kindergartners in a classroom looks very different. And so knowing that we are now, we've reduced those class sizes, K1 kindergarten, first and second grade over the last two years, I really think is an exciting development for this school district. The feedback I receive when I visit schools time and time and time again, the number one piece of feedback is our class size. So it's not something, to be clear, it's not something that we will be able to fix overnight. But I so much appreciate how this board is being flexible and adaptable in how we can address this over time. Again, we're not going to get there tomorrow, but we, a little work last year, a little work this year, you know, next year, we continue that work. But right now, when you look at our K1 and 2 sites, groups, it's really much more manageable than it was even just a couple of years ago. And you're to be commended about for that.
And I want to thank you and I want to thank Mr. Stacy and his team and the principals because that's pretty hard, right at the last minute, trying to fill these positions and get these classrooms up and running. And I know that the parents love it because they don't like those classrooms where they feel like they're bursting at the seam.
Clarify, your immersion classes don't fall in that 22 to one. We have to front-end, front-load those because over time, when kids are in an immersion program, if we lose them in first or second grade.
Yes.
That they are at 25 and then they will go.
I have a really loud voice anyway, but I was just saying the immersion, we have to front-end, we front-load those because over time, they tend to lose students, they move out of district. So those stayed at 25 to one because we don't add kids to those sections as they go forward. But all the regular ed kindergarten classes across the district as of yesterday were 22 to one or less. And then we have some that are a lot less than 22 to one. So we really do thank you for your foresight there.
Thank you for that question. Yeah, we've done a lot of good work with class sizes and we're excited about that. We're going to continue to work on that and with the interventionists. That was a big hit this year too.
I know that's near and dear to Mrs. Knight's heart.
Hit as a former kindergarten teacher, so. And you really know that your class size is tied to achievement directly. That gives those teachers the time they need to work with those younger students. And I appreciate you making that happen.
Thank you very much. That was a little longer report than I normally give. But again, first day of school, it's easy to be excited about things that are happening in Lexington 1. I know Mr. Salters has a lot of pictures for you tonight. So this is going to be a really great show and tell experience for us, an operations update. So sit back and really, we're going to look at all the work that's been done over the summer in just like rapid succession. So here we go.
That's my cue to be quick. And I'm going to take you on a quick tour around the district. We do have a number of projects that were completed this summer. We've got some pictures and we have a list of projects at each location. Don't have pictures of everything, so don't panic, but it will, we will go quickly through this. Obviously, our first and most significant project going on right now is our new middle school site. You can see this is changing almost daily. We decided to not let Dr. Little have announced visits out there. Every time he says he's coming to do a tour, we get three inches of rain the night before. So he is two for two. We're going to now do unannounced visits and hopefully hide from the rain. But you can see a lot of progress going on on that site. We've got our gymnasium area here really taking shape. And in fact, it's up to steel bearing height even today. So these pictures are just from last week. But we've got a lot of slab, this is a locker room area here, ready to be poured. And it's actually poured now. And in this area here, the auditorium is being formed and foundations being put in. So really a lot of progress made. Roofing is starting on our cafeteria area and kitchen, kitchen space. And so if we can keep the rain away, we can really start going. I was, I was out there this morning and there were easily probably over 400 people on that job site working in different areas. And I mean, it just looked like a bunch of ants and an anthill, really making progress. So very excited about, about the work going on at that campus. Couple more shots here and then we'll, this is the long loop road that we're required to install by Office of School Facilities. You see, we actually have the binder course of asphalt down there. And that's basically blocked off for regular traffic. But the contractor want to go ahead, try to go ahead and get that done and make some, make some progress. This upper area here is the playfield for our PE and they probably will practice football there like our other middle schools do. So starting around the district or our quick tour here, what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a school name. And then as an example here, I'm going to give you a list of projects. And then we may or may not have a few pictures of some of these projects. So at Deerfield Elementary School, these are some things that we've, we've worked on this summer. And again, you guys have done a number of motions over the course of the summer and in the spring to kick off a lot of this work. But you'll see a lot of this work is around safety and security. So we've got some additional door locks, 3M security film, this is a glazing that goes on windows and doors. And we've done some learning commons equipment upgrade across the district. Playground resurfacing will end up happening at all of our elementary schools. And this is a really key component. Our schools, this is a big challenge for us. And those of you've been around elementary schools know this. And we've gone to a rubberized surface under our playground equipment. It's the safest surface for, you know, falls and that type of protection. So we're very pleased to be able to move to that. We are moving to, it's labeled as a buzzer system, but it's a security system where all of our perimeter doors will be locked. And we have a buzzer and a camera. You'll have an intercom. And so if you, other than take-in, take-out times during the day, when you come up to the school, you're going to have to be announced, to be buzzed in, if you will, into our secured entrance area. And then some of our schools were able to pick up some additional furniture that they needed for growth and/or some replacement as we went around. So this is a good shot of that playground resurfacing. And it actually looks more like a mulch, but it's a nice rubberized product. You know, depending on use, you can get 10 to 15 years out of some, some of the materials, some of them even longer. And so it really makes a huge difference. Whereas in a situation like this, we were hauling in loads of mulch every year and struggling to keep it, in this case, it was mulch, struggling to keep that mulch, you know, under the equipment. And then it gets rutted out and sand gets mixed in. And this is a very durable surface. And also, as I said, the main, the best benefit to it is the, is a fall. It's a very cushioned fall versus, you know, falling on mulch. And it's an even thickness all the way across, which is, which is very important. And as you know, with sand or mulch, it can be disturbed and moved around. This cannot. So that keeps that, that focus there. Gilbert Elementary School, we did some work there with waterproofing, some other things, repainting parking lots. You'll see that theme come across, some asphalt repairs. And this is the two-story building there. We've had some water penetration on, on that wing. And so spent some time waterproofing some of those, or all of that wing really, and some interior classroom materials that were showing signs of water damage. So all of that was replaced and sealed up. And I know those teachers are very excited about that. New paving done at Gilbert Elementary School. Gilbert High School, number of different projects there, a lot of, a lot of little things. One of the big things there, we were able to do was replace the carpet in the classrooms with our VCT, our tile. And our teachers are really excited about that move. It's just easier to clean and they feel like it's a, it's a better environment to learn in when they have that tile floor. So we're able to do that. Did some repainting of parking lot lines and there's some new fencing there. Also at our high schools, we implementing a lightning detection system. It's much more efficient and accurate way to, to deal with lightning detection at our campuses versus, you know, just using your, your phone and your applications on your phone.
Which high school is this?
This is Gilbert High School.
Okay, Gilbert, I'm sorry.
Yep. And so here's some additional fencing that was installed there. This is down around the athletic area and the bus, bus parking. Some new water heaters. You'll notice on the right, these are tankless water heaters. You may be familiar with those. Some of your homes may have those. We're trying to move to this style water heater where possible. In a lot of cases, we have gymnasium locker rooms and so forth that don't get a lot of use, but we're creating and maintaining hot water in large capacities for it just to sit there. That's just kind of the old, older model and older style. And these newer models, of course, it's in-line, just-in-time hot water. And so we don't have to store and maintain that water. So it's much more efficient. In some, in some cases where the water's used constantly, we're still using the larger capacity, you know, water heaters for storage. But we're, you're seeing more of that moving around. Dr. Powers?
And everyone knows I'm a big school funding push. But so what that translates though is that we build those water heaters with capital funds, which tax owner-occupied houses. And instead, and our operating costs go down, which saves money for our businesses.
That's correct.
Yeah. So the more we can do that as a district to, you know, save on operating through capital expenditures, the better we'll partner with our business community and tax where our operational costs are coming from, which is our kids and their houses. So that's good.
That's a good point. This is one of the classrooms where we replaced the VCT. Of course, that was done across the building. Again, that's a much better maintenance environment for, for the students as well. Gilbert Middle School.
Did you take those TVs down at Gilbert High School or are they still up there?
Uh, I'll have to check on that. I'll.
They just look like dinosaurs sitting up there.
I'll, I'll check on that.
I know they're heavy and it's hard to recycle them, but they just look.
Yep. Gilbert Middle School, a number of projects there, a big project replacing the intercom, a lot of, again, parking lot. a lot of, again, parking lot, some security upgrades there, some fencing to control better access to our our loop road and so forth between the the schools there. Some locker room, girls' and boys' lockers were replaced at that school. You know, the school's over twenty years old now, actually more than twenty years old. So those lockers were replaced. We're reworking the secured entrance here and a couple of other locations to move the employee that sits in that space out of the direct secured foyer. So so we're creating a kind of a vestibule for them to sit in and then still maintain that that access. So this is the beginnings work of that. You see the new basketball court coating there. Gilbert Primary, again, a number of security features there. Big thing, you'll see this done at a number of schools, replace that multipurpose room carpet with the sports floor. Makes a huge difference in those spaces. Again, some hot water heaters, some ADA curb access improvements in our helping with getting ADA students in and out of the campus there. Shot of the playground surfacing at that facility. Multipurpose, sorry, there's a sports floor there. And then overall parking and repaving at Gilbert Primary School. I mean, you could remember that campus, if you've been there recently, I mean, that parking lot was really chewed up. So we're able to repave that whole area and restripe it, so that really helps a lot with traffic flow. Lake Murray Elementary School, again, the continuing with the security theme, we also have some safety. We've we've added some roof ladders there to to help our custodial staff and others inspect the roof more safely. Secured foyer work here we're doing, and then the three M safety glass as well, those are the ladders. Here's the secured entrance, this is actually in a guidance room that's behind the secured entrance, but it's going to become an office for that person to sit, and that'll be the window where they pass through to our to our visitors coming in. Lexington Middle School, new new PA system, some work in the theater for our fire alarm panel and so forth. And a few other things at at Midway, number of projects going on there. Some safety, security, again, we did a lot of work in the parking lots there. Last year, you recall, we replaced all the HVAC systems in the classrooms. We finished the HVAC units in the commons areas this summer, as well as replacing the windows. And then here's a shot of some of the secured foyer work, kind of looks like a mess, but it, there's actually a method to that madness. Again, moving that person out of that central vestibule there. There's a look at the new windows that have been installed, and some of the HVAC units in the commons areas being being put on the roofs. And then here's the new parking lot repaving, so so all of that was repaved and restripped.
And again, the more efficient we can get with heating and cooling our buildings, that's good for us.
Absolutely, and new units are much more efficient, which results in decreased power bills.
It's hard to believe that school's already twenty-four years old.
That's right.
What I just have to say, because I drive by Midway all the time, and even my children, the parking lot repaving, it's amazing the curb appeal improvement that that makes to the school campus. You you don't realize just how much the paving affects how the school looks.
Right.
So beat up. And it really is, it has made a big difference.
We mentioned HVAC and and energy savings, and just as a side note, we were able to receive the credit that I'm sure many of you received if you're SNG customers. We received that on our on our bills, and it's gonna be a substantial savings for for the district over the over the, looking back over those months that they did the look back on, and it's fifteen percent going forward. So it's several hundred thousand dollars.
That is terrific.
That we're receiving on that. Moving to Medical Land Elementary School, playground resurfacing there and some safety film. Again, Medical Land Middle School, some additional cameras. Shades in the learning commons, that was a a big issue for them. We're piloting the the buzzer system at that campus as well. Those are not actually installed yet, but they will be here soon.
What did you say the security glass film is?
Is a three M safety glass, this glass is not, it's a it's a film that goes on glass, and you can watch videos on YouTube. This is not a bulletproof glass, but it it provides a, basically a deterrent for, you can take bullets and you can shoot that window, and then you still can't get through it. If you shot up a window like this window right here, you know, it would just push out of the way. With this three M safety film in there, you can shoot the window and you still can't get through it. Any security element that you add to or layer that you add to a building, you're, it's all about creating time, because you wanna create response time for law enforcement to get there. And so in in the videos that you see, glass and film similar to this, takes about a minute, minute and a half for someone to, you know, shoot it with an AR-15 and then try to push it out and try to get through it. So it it really is about creating time, this is just one of many security features that we're moving to in all of our schools.
I saw, I think it was on WIS that that new elementary school in Lexington two, they put in some, I think it's bulletproof glass in that brand-new school they just opened yesterday. Is it is it the film or is it bulletproof glass?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
But it was, the demonstration they did on the segment was very impressive.
There there's a lot of different technologies that are coming out, and some retrofit things you can do that are pretty easy and quick to install and then some.
So how many windows, did you put it on all of them or just across the front, or how did how did you decide?
I'll just say yes. We we've secured the areas that we believe are the most important.
Okay.
Kinda don't wanna get too deep into that.
No, agree, yeah, shouldn't have asked that.
No, no, that's that's fine. New Providence Elementary School, we did some, again, some security upgrades there. The sports floor, the more, and and their building, a new sports floor and multipurpose room. And cleaned up, you can see the at the top there, those air diffusers, that tile, all that got cleaned up as well in that space. Oak Grove Elementary School, again, security, we replaced the PA system there, over at paging System. Sports floor made a huge difference in in the look of that that space. Peleon Elementary School, number of projects going on at Peleon Elementary School. Some of them are still going on, we will actually have a new front desk area, the secured foyer area, which is a picture here, was created, it had a door here, but the person, if someone came in, the person has no way to get out, and so we've created a door here, reworked this counter, put a wall up here so that they're they're protected and could could retreat if they needed to. So really trying to focus on the safety of our employees as well. New flooring in in the older wings of Peleon Elementary School, removing the carpet there.
It looks really good.
Yeah, they're super excited about that. Multipurpose room has the the sports floor in it, some parking lot striping. If you've been out there, you could not see the lines, I mean, it was just kind of a free-for-all, so we've been able to do that. That's made a big difference. Playground fencing, there's, they have a large playground on that campus, and we're able to to fence that off and better better protect and manage the the students in that area while they're outside.
When we were out there last year, several of the parents approached us and said they had a little bit of a problem with stray dogs out there. So I know that'll be a comfort to those parents, because I think we had two or three mention it to us that night, that they had a real problem with just stray dogs coming up to the playgrounds.
Yep, kitchen water heater, large capacity water heater there. Peleon High School, a number of projects there. Again, one of the big projects was replacing that carpet across all of the classrooms with the VCT. And also, all of the the door locks in that campus were replaced. It was an interesting lock configuration where the teachers couldn't lock the doors from the inside without having a key, and so that does not help us in our lockdown situation, so those were replaced to meet our standard, again, new water heaters, again, the tankless water heaters used in in this installation. There's a shot of the classroom floors there, those will look like that twenty years from now with the staff at Peleon High School.
Yeah.
They do a phenomenal job.
Cleanest school ever.
Yep, Peleon Middle School, some some good projects there that that we were able to to put in, some furniture and some other equipment that they really needed to scrubber, lawnmower and so forth. Red Bank, again, playground surfacing, we did a lot of work on the the sports floor. The entrance and ADA accessibility at this campus was was very limited, and so we've improved that significantly. And then also some HVAC pump replacement and then repaving. And this was a a major outfit for for them, and created an ADA entrance here, which really didn't exist at Red Bank. It was very cumbersome for someone to have to kind of go all the way down the end and come around, so it's much more accessible. Created handicap parking here in the front, it's a much better traffic flow there. River Bluff, you just, last month approved the, excuse me, the fire access road drive, and that that was completed. Again, we're we're doing some carpet, and there's the fire access road there that's been paved. And that's a major improvement to that accessibility for for emergency services for that campus. Rocky Creek, some furniture, playground surfacing, and some repainting of parking lot lines. Saks Gothel, number of projects there, again, related to security, communication with our new intercom there. New stage curtain, and you know, that really makes a difference in a cafeteria space, if you've seen that happen. Again, parking lot lines, and then the concrete planters, you guys did that recently, a motion for that. And this is the planters, they were filled with dirt, caused a lot of moisture issues on in the carpet that was adjacent to it. So this area has been tiled, and those planters are now filled in with concrete. So much more environmentally friendly for our students. Same thing at Whitenole Elementary School, we did some parking lot work there, and then here's a shot of the tile and the planter that's filled in, still got some kind of dress-up work to finish that out.
Why didn't we just take those planters out?
No, why didn't we?
It was it was basically easier to fill that in, and they wanted that space. You know, students sit on those benches, and the schools felt like they could they could make use of them as benches in in those spaces. And it was more cost-effective just to fill it in and then remove it and deal with the floor patching and all that was going on there.
Well, I said this last month, but we were out there for the summer reading program with Dr. Bissell and all of her teachers, and I mean, you talk about an improvement, that whole school just looked great, because it had really aged and was so worn. And it just, it was just such an uplift for that school.
And the learning commons got new new carpet and some new furniture in it, and, you know, speaking to your point. Parking lot was in really bad shape.
It was in terrible shape.
And it was repaved, and the and the loop drive there is repaved as well. And Whitenole Middle School, number of computers were were the focus at Whitenole Middle School. They had some really old labs there, and so we were able to to address that need for them. We're also addressing the secured foyer there. Again, a similar situation where the the person was sitting out in the secured foyer with the the visitors coming in, so we're able to to.
It just feels awkward, it's a, this is strange entrance.
Yep.
May I go back to something you said early on? Also, as a reminder to the board, that Whitenole Middle School will be a code to the future school next year, and also was the importance of them having those labs in order to do the coding work that our kids are gonna be doing there next year.
That's exciting.
That's a great point. You can see the parking lot repavements there, makes it makes a huge difference. And Whitenole High School, number of things going on there. Again, one of the biggest things we did at that campus was replace all the classroom carpet with tile. And that's a huge, huge play, huge campus.
Oh, my goodness, it needed it.
Yeah, yeah.
How does it look? Does it just look?
It looks great.
Do they love it?
Yeah, they do.
They have to.
Yeah, they're very excited about it. And we've we've done some other work there that's that's been outstanding for a while. Here's some of the classrooms, you can see they look really good, ready for students. Big thing that was a real problem for us is the this ceiling, the paint on this wrestling room ceiling was coming off and and just really causing a mess for student athletes in this space. Every day, they were having to sweep paint chips off the off the wrestling mats, and it was just a real problem. So we finally able to get that stripped and repainted, makes a huge difference in that space. It's kind of an ongoing issue for them that that has now now been resolved. Whitenole High School also, through their funding, got a new marquee sign. So you'll notice it's it's here and it sits under, right under here, so it's electronic sign. We were able to support the installation of that, we did all the, they bought the sign, we did all the electrical work to get it to get it up and running, so. So that's kind of a quick tour around the district, a lot of projects, be happy to answer any questions.
That's a crazy amount of stuff to have accomplished this summer. Just kudos to you and your crew, because that's amazing.
Well, it was a, it was really a team effort, a lot of our IT folks are here, and they they did, had a big hand in that, our, obviously, our construction team, maintenance team. But the unsung heroes of the of the effort are our procurement and finance folks, because all that work had to be bid out, and we were just, you know, shooting a fire hose at them, and they just kept kept processing it and getting it out. And so we really appreciate everybody's work helping us get it done.
Job well done, thank you very much.
I'm sorry that Mr. Butler has to follow that, that's a lot of great news. Mr. Salters, thank you for that, again, thank you for you and your team's work on that. Mr. Butler has.
I don't know why you would think that sole source and source and emergency annual report would be a letdown after new carpet and new paving and furniture and stuff, so.
But but yeah, Mr. Mr. Butler has a couple of reports for us, and so I'll turn it over to him.
All right, thank you. Once you hear the report, it might be a little bit depressing. Our procurement code requires us to report to the board annually all source, sole source and emergency expenditures. So this is the report to the board for the fiscal year seventeen eighteen year, showing all the expenditures for sole source and the emergency and and who those went to. This is just a report only and no action is required, but I'll be glad to answer any questions. All right, you want me to go on?
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, the next one is our minority business enterprise, our MBE annual report. This also is just a report, no action required. Our procurement code does require us to set a goal for our MBE vendors, and we have done that every year. We, for seventeen eighteen, did not quite meet that goal. We do make every effort to meet that goal. We load, we get from the the state the list of all certified MBE vendors that certified through the state. We load every one of those vendors on our system. Anytime there is a bid, we reach out to those MBE vendors. As you can see to the back there, there are some sixty bids that were done last year, where we actually reached out to any MBE vendors we knew and and sent that to them. Now, as you can also tell by the ones who have zero behind it, that a lot of those did not go to MBE vendors, simply because they were more expensive than the other responsive bidders. Now, the state kind of makes an exception sometimes and goes with an MBE vendor to make their goal, even though it costs more. We've made the decision not to do that. We're gonna take the the more efficient, less expensive bid, regardless of who it is, as long as they're a responsive bidder. We are making strides in in getting closer to that goal, so I'd be glad to answer any questions about that.
Questions?
You know, when I wanna go out and buy something, I just go buy it, but as policy and part of our procurement, we bid it, and we take the lowest bidder, and again, looking at the loan.
And again, looking at the loan or emergency contracts, I mean, percentage-wise, a very, very, very small part of our budget.
It is.
Four to five basis points, I mean, .04%. So again, we, because we bid it, we get the lowest price, and I know that's a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you. And each of those sole source and emergency procurements, I have to sign off on, and they have to show documentation as to why they're a sole source or why it's an emergency procurement. It's just not a matter of them submitting something in and a vendor saying, no, but we are the only sole source. They do have to provide documentation for that, and I do review each of those and sign off on them, so.
It's a labor of love, but important. So form drives function, but I think funding and form drives function, so.
That's true. Thank you.